We'll have an invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby and a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey.
Let's pray. Holy Father, we're thankful for this day that you've allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for rest on last night. We thank you for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family. We pray for those who are hurting. Father, we thank you for the weather today. We thank you, Lord God, for protecting us throughout this week. We pray, Lord, for wisdom and direction in this meeting and that we do those things to benefit those we serve. Lord bless each of us to do your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we have roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Williams absent. Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of July 2nd, 2019, regular minutes and dispense with the reading.
I'll move. Second.
Move my Tim Larkin second. Uh, Mr. Harvey? What's that?
Yeah.
Yes. Refresh it, yeah. You all heard?
Mine's, oh, mine's not. Well, the error is there.
Cheers working, Jim.
Yeah.
Just go old school.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Council, we have one add-on to the agenda. It'll be numbered, it'll be new business number nine. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an assistant superintendent for the Public Utilities Department, first and final reading.
So we need a motion to add this on. A motion by Mr. Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Mr. Larkin. And it's a stat for the add-on. All in favors say aye. Oh, a public comment. All in favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Make the motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Darby. Public comment. All in favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, so now I'd like to recognize some guests. I think we have some folks here from the Bossier Youth Leadership. If y'all would stand up, we'd like to recognize you. All right, well, thank you for being here. You're in for a great city council meeting. What's that? Uh, let's go on to committee reports. Jeremy Hefner is going to speak for the Bossier Arts Council. Jeremy?
Good afternoon, councilmen. Is that really loud? Jeremy Hefner, I'm the new event coordinator for the East Bank District and Plaza and the Bossier Arts Council. It's nice to meet all of you finally. I'm going to go over the quarterly report today. I believe you all have a copy of that if you want to look on with me. So, a brief recap here. Brief recap. We've had roughly around thirty programs in the East Bank District and Plaza between April and June of this year, which is pretty amazing. We've had quite a bit of foot traffic thanks to those events. Roughly anywhere between a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty guests per event. And at each of our merchants meetings, all of the local businesses have been telling us that they've been getting a lot of walk-ins, a lot of good business. Everybody's pretty happy with it. There's been a lot of collaboration between the businesses in the district, working on these events. Everybody's really informed. At each of these meetings, we recap the ones that we've had and we go over the ones upcoming. So, everyone's really happy with those, especially the Freedom Fest events. The Freedom Fest Fridays, we had some killer responses, a lot of good feedback. I think that if we continue to do those next year, we're just going to grow and grow. Those events are probably going to get more and more foot traffic. And moving on from there, we've got some, a list of upcoming events. So, the East Bank Market, the Tuesday Market, has moved to the last Tuesday of every month. They started noticing a little decrease in traffic, most likely because it was every single week. So, now they're moving it to the last Tuesday and we're collaborating with Chris Graham and adding in art pop-up and a couple of other events for the upcoming markets to bring in more traffic, more appeal, something new to each of the markets. I encourage you all to come down, hang out, check it out. Every Thursday is, of course, Family Bike Ride, which is great. And we've actually, we've been seeing quite a few families walking up and down in the district, even just during the daytime, days that there aren't events, checking out the food. Good stuff. We've been actually getting a lot of walk-ins in the council as well, people coming in and looking at the art. Coming up, there's the Gritonian Music and Dance Festival. It's an African-American Heritage Festival. There's going to be drum circles, R&B, live R&B and soul. There's going to be some barbecue out there, snow cones and a bouncy house for the kids. It's going to be a really fun event, family-friendly. Also, the scavenger hunt for the East Bank is coming up, encouraging people to come out, take pictures with things in the plaza. And the, they're going to upload those pictures to their social media using our hashtag, East Bank Bossier. And the winner for best pictures out there and collecting all those pictures gets a hundred dollars on us. So, we're promoting that event. Also coming up is the East Bank Hip-Hop Challenge. It's part of a series of music challenges that we are programming. Each was a totally different theme and a cash prize. It's kind of like a Battle of the Bands event. There's a set of rules that everyone has to abide by. It's a very family-friendly event. And also coming up is the Digi Music Festival, part of Digi Fest South. And I'm actually in charge of the Digi Music Festival this year. Within our budget, I've programmed most of the marketing for that event. And I've got around seven artists of different varying electronic genres playing. It's going to be a really fun, free, open event. We're going to get that marketing out very soon. And additionally, the Zombie Walk is now being taken in as, it was a separate entity, now it's the Bossier Arts Council's event. We're collaborating that with a junior Battle of the Bands. We're going to work with high schools in the surrounding area and get the schools involved and get those young musicians out there and into the plaza and kind of get them to see what's going on in the East Bank as well. And if you want to look onward, I actually put a couple of pictures together of the Freedom Fest events. If you want a little recap of what was going on down there. Some good pictures, a lot of foot traffic, got the fireworks down there from the Fourth of July event. It was a fantastic time. And then, of course, we have our map. So, if anyone's curious about who's down there, what businesses we have and what to check out, there's that map and that map is open to the public. Do we have any questions?
Jeremy, I would just say, I appreciate what you're doing, number one. Suggestions would be, from time to time throughout the year, I check Facebook just to see if it was up to date with what's going on. And sometimes events were not posted very timely or if at all, so.
Okay.
You can't get people there if they don't know it's happening. So, I would say we've got to get it on Facebook. I would suggest getting a Twitter account so that it, you know, shoots to people's phones and people get notifications when something is coming up. And then the Freedom Fest, I've talked to Pam, that needs to start like at six-thirty or seven. It was very hot and it's, you know, five o'clock traffic. It's tough to get there when it's close at five.
Yeah, we can, we can get with KTBS and, and plan for next year and.
But I went, it was great. It was very well done. So, thank you. Any comments from council?
I was amazed at all the things that you've done and it looks, this is really exciting.
Thank you.
Lot of accomplishment, lots going on, lot coming up. I commend you all on your, what you've done.
Thank you so much. Anything else I can do for anyone?
All right, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, guys.
And now the highlight of our month is Mark Hudson. Our monthly project report on road projects primarily.
Thanks, Council. Shed Road. They began preparations for putting down stripes yesterday. They're preparing for stripes today and they're going to actually paint some stripes tomorrow. The striper will be gone Thursday and Friday. Prior commitments on another project, but he'll be back next week and he should finish the stripes, which means the barricades will go away. There's still a few punchless items, but the barricades will go away. Viking Drive. We had, we have our final plan review in August. Our friends from DOTD in Baton Rouge are going to come up here for that meeting. I expect after that meeting, we should be allowed to start purchasing right-of-way. All the right-of-way maps are down in Baton Rouge now being reviewed and approved. Coleman Street Project. I told you that we had our Plan in Hand meeting last month. That was a good meeting. There's some plan revisions to be made. We need to ask for a design waiver to eliminate a big sidewalk on one side of the street. I hope that's approved because it's really going to make it hard to build if we have to build sidewalks on both sides. The plan is to bid this project in April of next year. That's nine months from now. Innovation Drive is making great progress despite all the weather. You know it was a wetlands to begin with and it's still a wetlands. My guys tell me it's easy to sink knee-deep in mud out there, but our contractor is, works every day. They've worked some days that I'm surprised they didn't claim a bad weather day, but we've got seventy-five percent of the water in the ground, about ten percent of the sewers in the ground, and they're going to start laying storm pipe tomorrow. That project is supposed to be complete in September of next year, but our contractor's confident he's going to beat that date. Waltrou Bigby Phase One, that's the Highway Eighty section that's under construction right now. If you've driven down there, it's, it's a war zone, but I think that's a good thing. It means our contractor is kicking and getting it every day. Every, it's like an archaeological, archaeological dig almost every day. We found a railroad track yesterday under the ground, but we're getting it done. The water main, if you've driven it, you see a lot of water on the street. There's a leaking water main underneath that pavement. It's going to be abandoned in about two weeks, so that problem will go away. The drainage pipes laid down to the big roundabout now. Good progress there and they actually had their first concrete pour this past weekend. The bigger project, the Waltrou Bigby Carriageway, our designers are continuing to work towards a hundred percent complete design. We are scheduled, or trying to make a schedule to go back to Vicksburg for another sit-down to talk about the independent engineering peer review, another firm we need to hire to review our plans. Council, I'll be bringing to you an ordinance to, to fund that effort. And our engineers have asked that we consider increasing their fees a little bit, and I think it's a reasonable request. When we started, five years ago, our estimate was twenty-eight million. Now, it's grown to thirty-nine and a half million. So, their scope has increased substantially and I'll be bringing you an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds there. Swan Lake Road at I-220, our plans are complete. That's the big change order. Those plans are in Baton Rouge right now being reviewed. We had an ordinance for a million and a half and I think that's going to be just enough money. We're getting a new roof on the arena. That's going well. Tinsley Ball Field plans are complete. We're waiting to mitigate the wetlands. I told Councilman Irwin that Thursday, Kansas City Southern will replace the crossing at Robert E. Lee. Thank you. And lastly, for Councilman Darby, I've been trying to get a start date for the lights to be installed on North Gate. It's going to happen. I just don't know the date yet. And as soon as I get it, I'll let you know.
How much more, how much money do we have left in the Century Link Fund from the seven, whatever it was, seven or eight million dollar bond?
We got, pretty much. I would say I've spent, after the roofs installed, Councilman, we will have spent, I believe, about four and a half million bucks. And there's no, there's no big projects.
So, how much do we have left? What was the original issue? Seven and a half? Eight?
Six point three, I think. Six point nine.
Got roughly two point four million?
Yes, sir.
What are your plans?
Well, we've talked about another list to wrap some things up. In addition, they want to add some kitchen equipment. We talked about new ceiling tiles inside the arena after the new roof is put on. After that, I'm kind of out of ideas.
Mark, I have a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, we have a big electronic sign in front of Century Link.
Yes, sir.
And it gets some views, but there's a whole section of Shreveport, Bossier, and people passing through town that don't see that sign. It's down in South Bossier. Let's put a sign up on I-20, maybe somewhere around land that we have around Cyber, that just promotes the Century Link. I, I think it would get hundreds of thousands of views per month.
Well, suggestion heard and I'll mention it to the folks at the arena.
Could you ask Rebecca, you know, how this originally started with, you know, Councilman Williams and myself went out there and, you know, walked the arena and just see if she has some more wishlist, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Because, I mean, we took that tour, what was that, a month ago? When they showcased everything?
Couple months.
That was really impressive. I don't know how many.
Probably many.
But, I mean, they really made it enticing and, and, you know, a good feeling when you walk through there.
Yeah.
So, anything that we can do to enhance the, the center and, and give people a better experience, I think will translate to, you know, more successful venues and.
Yes, sir. Next time I'll bring you a list of the projects we've done, the.
Yeah, if you could, you know what I mean, what money's left and then get with Rebecca and see.
Yes, sir. I've asked Rebecca more than once for that new list and I know she's working on it.
Okay.
And I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
And any, any, any suggestions y'all have, like the one Councilman Irwin just had?
Does anyone else have a question or would come in?
We've done all the big stuff. New roof, new parking lot, new interior. We washed the building.
That was a good idea too, by the way, Mark.
Brilliant. And new kitchen equipment, new seating, new phones. I do know, I do know they still want to put in a new security system. So, that's another, I'm sure, a costly project, but.
I went to the Alabama concert and that security system that they used was excellent. It seemed to get people in. You have to get there a little early, but it, it was well done. If no one else has a question, I do have a question for something that you haven't discussed in a while, but there has been a lot of discussing, discussion recently on the Jimmy Davis Bridge. There's been discussion of rehabbing, discussion of a new bridge. Can you give us an update or status report on that?
Not at this moment. I cannot. I hear the same information you guys do.
If you wouldn't mind, I'm catching you a little off-guard, but including that in your monthly or quarterly, what do you do this month?
If y'all want to go to quarterly.
I like monthly. But you can have a seat. I have some comments on the Jimmy Davis Bridge issue because there has been some major things happen and I just feel the need to represent those people that are affected by the Jimmy Davis Bridge. At our last meeting, Ginger Corley, Ginger Adam Corley, gave a report and she talked about the Jimmy Davis Bridge and the I-49 project and something didn't quite sit right with me concerning that discussion. Since then, I've done extensive research on this and what I found out to me was simply shocking and astonishing. So, if you would bear with me for about four minutes, I'm not trying to be mean-spirited towards Senator Peacock and I regret that I have to speak about his decision regarding the Jimmy Davis Bridge in such unpleasant terms. Senator Peacock has done many good things for our region, but what Senator Peacock has done concerning that bridge is simply not right and tragic to the residents residing on both sides of the Jimmy Davis Bridge. The number-one issue in South Bossier, and Senator Peacock's district overlaps and his South Bossier area is, is a lot of the same district I represent. The number-one issue there is the Jimmy Davis Bridge. South Bossier residents have worked for over a decade for a new Jimmy Davis Bridge to be built. They have waited and they have waited and they have waited. They have endured money woes. They have endured endangered bird delays, birds roosting in the bridge. And then they have endured more money woes. As a representative of those South Bossier residents, I've met with our previous governor, Bobby Jindal. I've met with our current governor, John Bell Edwards, numerous times. And approximately ninety days ago, I presented a petition to Governor Edwards with hundreds of names on it. This petition was for a new Jimmy Davis Bridge. Well, the good news, we have some good news and we have some bad news. I want to pass out a copy of, of an amendment and you just pass it down and you can pass it on to the mayor. You pass that on down to, to Jimmy. The, the good news is, a short-term later, after I presented this petition to the governor, House Bill 578 came out with one hundred million dollars for the Jimmy Davis Bridge. This was fully funding a brand-new Jimmy Davis Bridge. The fight was over. We had the funding for the new bridge. And let me tell you, the beauty of this was it wasn't going to require one penny from Bossier City, not one penny from Bossier Parish, not one penny from Shreveport, not one penny from Caddo Parish. It was one hundred percent funded by the state of Louisiana. Now, the bad news, and I just don't understand it. Through Amendment 2862, the funds for the Jimmy Davis Bridge were moved to the I-49 connector by Senator Peacock. He may tell you otherwise, but I have the documents right here. This is the amendment and it is, it's on page two, if you're interested in looking at this, Council. And if anyone else wants a copy of this, I have some extra copies. All of, if you turn to the last page, you will see that lines one through three were deleted, which was the discussion of the Jimmy Davis Bridge, and it was replaced with the words, "I-49 Inter-City Connector in Caddo Parish, one hundred million dollars." All of the money was switched from the Jimmy Davis Bridge to the I-49 connector. Now, I want to make it clear, I'm not opposed to the I-49 connector, but if it is not built, if the I-49 connector is not built, people are not going to fall in to a muddy and swollen Red River. If the Jimmy Davis Bridge is not replaced, I fear for the safety of those using that bridge over the long term. Now, I don't want to cause a needed fear. I think that bridge is safe today, but it is obvious that it's deteriorating. The superstructure is solid rust and now the decking in, in the roadway of the Jimmy Davis Bridge is developing potholes. They say that a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush, but Senator Peacock thinks that two in the bush is better. Now, Senator Peacock has told me, "Don't worry," and I've read the article in, in the Bossier Tribune, that, and he's trying to accomplish both projects with that one pool of money. But, but the bottom line is, we're right back to square one and square one means that it's not funded. And now, we're looking for over six-hundred million dollars in federal funds. Once that money gets to the state, we then have to make sure that those dollars make their way to the state. To sum it up, we're in for more delays, more political battles, and more money woes. The Jimmy Davis Bridge was one hundred percent funded without the city or the parish on either side of the bridge putting up one penny. Now, it's not. Now, Mr. Peacock has told me, "Mr. Irwin, you need to stop talking about this." You're building a wedge between Shreveport and Bossier City. And my response to that is, the last time I checked, Shreveport was on one side of the Jimmy Davis Bridge and Bossier City was on the other. I'm not building a wedge. I'm building a bridge. That bridge runs right smack dab through the center of Senator Peacock's district. I'm furious about this ill-conceived decision. I want the citizens of South Bossier to know that I understand the number-one issue in their district is the Jimmy Davis Bridge. I want them to know that Governor John Bell Edwards knows that the number-one issue in South Bossier is the Jimmy Davis Bridge. It appears that to Senator Peacock, other issues are more important. To say that I am disappointed in Senator Peacock is an understatement. Again, I, I want to apologize for having to speak so direct on this issue, but the Jimmy Davis Bridge is a massive safety concern and, believe me, it's critical to the health of both South Bossier and South Shreveport. We had a new Jimmy Davis Bridge and Senator Peacock moved the funds to the I-49 connector. Any comments?
We happen to know if the, in the Transportation Improvement, the NLCOG tip, is this, do we know which project has priority in that? I mean, I, I wouldn't think you'd necessarily have that on the top of your mind, but I wonder if it would bear on this or, I suppose it's kind of like.
If I may, Councilman Mark, I think in the briefing we give to the rotating comit, committee every year, I think we made Jimmy Davis Bridge the number-one priority. That's from the parish, the city, and DOTD, a joint letter we submitted to them.
I guess that would be important to know if that, it kind of makes the transportation improvement. I, I guess it just makes that a moot kind of a thing if, if we're not going to follow that program. So, anyway, that, that's my comment. I, I don't, I don't know what it is. I just know that part of the decision-making process on these kind of things that are large like this is a look at the big picture and the funding and where money comes from and then, and then a decision on what comes first and what comes next and. And if this was a priority that suddenly changed at the last minute, certainly should be at least brought to the attention of the electorate.
Well, I've been to probably thirty community meetings where both Senator Peacock and I have spoke and thought we were on the same page. The citizens of Bossier signed this petition. I gave it to the governor and it was exciting when that Jimmy Davis Bridge was one hundred percent funded, but devastating when I learned that that money was moved from the Jimmy Davis Bridge to the I-49 connector. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business.
I have the financial report.
Oh, sorry, Stacy. Oh, sorry, Stacy. Stacy Fernandez, City Finance Director, will give our monthly financial report.
I've distributed the reports, counsel, and page one is revenue by fund. We're currently at a hundred and twelve percent of budget. The general fund sales tax portion of that is at a hundred and two percent. Page two is expenses by fund. We're at ninety-four percent. Page three for the sales tax for June. The second section is the year-to-date collections, and we've made some, a positive move there, but we're still one point two percent below prior year.
That's a lot better than it was.
Yes, it is. It was two point six, I believe. Page four is our manning report. We're down five employees from last month, and we're twenty-two below budget. Finally, page five is the water and sewer. We are at thirty-five percent of budget month over month. We're at forty-six percent year over year. We're favorable three fifty to budget, and the rolling twelve months, we're at a hundred and forty-five percent, which is very good.
We're doing good. Any questions on this report, counsel? Thank you, Stacy. Unfinished business.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of ex-proportion proceedings for a street and traffic safety project in connection with two cross-access drives at Walmart Supercenter and Kroger Marketplace. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
So that was moved by Senator Harvey.
Senator Harvey, nice job. Congratulations. Am I replacing Peacock?
I don't think you would be a senator right now. Councilman Harvey, and it was seconded by Councilman Montgomery.
Montgomery, yes.
Any comments from the public? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-1916, Wallbrook and Field of Dreams Park Parking Lot additions.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate is three hundred and fifty thousand. The approved budget is four hundred and thirty thousand, and it's being funded from the 2018 LCDA bond issue. There are no, there are no addendums. The first bid is from Boggs and Poole Contracting Group, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for three hundred sixty-three thousand ninety-four dollars. Three six three zero nine four point zero zero. The next bid is from Bowman Grading and Asphalt, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for three hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars. Three eight one nine four one point zero zero. The next bid is from Corcoran Construction Company, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for three hundred ten thousand six hundred forty dollars. Three one oh six four oh point oh oh. And the last bid is from Dale's Paving, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for three hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. Three seven seven nine six seven point zero zero. Ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Free, second by Councilman Larkin. Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 708 Leon Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112.
Mayor, counsel?
Thank you.
We sent the letter back in April. It was signed for, we asked them to repair the house or demo it. The condemnation, all paperwork has been filed. On this house, the roof is leaking, the floor's got holes rotted in it, somebody's gone in and stripped the wiring out of the inside. There's holes in the wall. The house is falling down. It is bad shape, and we need to just demo it.
Counsel, Robin Harville reached out to the owner, John Clay Mitchell. He passed away. We confirmed who his heirs are. He's got two nephews that have survived him, Brett Mitchell and Michael Mitchell, and the two gentlemen both live in East Texas. Brett has indicated to me that he and his brother don't have any desire nor the wherewithal to cure the repairs or actually remove the trailer from the lot, and so instructed that I inform the counsel of that.
When we go to remove a trailer, a mobile home from a lot, do we demolish it on the lot, or do we put wheels on it and somebody haul it off?
They demolish them on the lot. Usually, they come in with a trackhoe, they smash it, roll it up, and toss it in with a dump truck and haul it away.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks pretty bad, looking at the pictures. All right, so y'all have a recommendation to demolish. Do we have a motion from the council to recommend?
I'll move. I like the motion.
I second.
First by Councilman Larkin, and second by Councilman Harvey to demolish the building. Is there any comments from the public? If none, then we'll take a vote. This is a vote to demolish this property. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to restore operation to the water filling station at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montgomery, and a second by Councilman Free. Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Introduce an ordinance to authorize and appropriate funds to contribute to the employment of an executive director for Keep Bossier Beautiful. The expenditure will be divided equally between the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office, Bossier Parish Police Jury, and the City of Bossier City. The annual salary and benefits package totals sixty-five thousand dollars, with the city's portion totaling twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin.
Just a comment, Mr. President. We did add the requirement at the end of it that the first six months would be a trial period, as was suggested.
That's been added?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask this. Will this person answer to the city, the parish, or who?
Answer to the sheriff.
To the sheriff?
That person will supervise the Keep Bossier Beautiful, but they will be administratively assigned to the sheriff.
Is the sheriff putting in two?
The sheriff initiated the project.
Yeah, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, if we could have this person check on the debris that accumulates on the interstates and bridges, I know that's contracted by the state, but it'd be nice for those contractors to know there's a set of eyes watching them.
I did follow up with Mission North, as I said I would, and it's, the situation's even worse. They don't do it once a month like they were doing it, they're doing it less frequently than that. It is a serious problem.
It's a problem, so maybe that's something we can address.
Yes.
Some form or fashion. I mean, it's called Keep Bossier Beautiful, and when we have garbage all over our interstates and bridges, we need to address that. But this is a start, so we have a motion by Senator Montgomery, a second by Senator, Councilman Montgomery.
I didn't know how we all got elevated. I guess you were still worked up about Senator Peacock.
I'm going to be worked up for a while.
It's obvious.
It is obvious, yeah. Is there any comments from the public?
I'm still a councilman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
So Councilman Darby made the motion, seconded by Councilman Harvey. Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Approve report of final change order for the Arthur Attig Parkway Swan Lake Road pavement markings and increase of four thousand sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. Total cost of contract with increase, four hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Larkin. We don't need public comment on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Approve report of change order number one for the LaSanne Sewer Lift Station project for an increase of two thousand one hundred dollars and twelve cents. Total cost of contract with increase, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars and twelve cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Montgomery, and second by Councilman Darby. Don't need public comment on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution to hire one traffic control lead technician and one traffic control technician for the traffic engineering division, with both hires due to vacancies within the division. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Harvey, a second by Mr. Larkin. Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of assistant superintendent for the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Free, a second by Mr. Larkin. Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This motion carries. Now time for announcements. I would like to announce next week is an off week. We don't have a meeting next week.
I think we had an add-on. Was that all?
That was the add-on.
Okay.
So we're done with the add-on. So no meeting next week. Our next meeting is July 30th, and that will be an agenda meeting. Does anyone else have any announcements? If not, this meeting is adjourned.